Madam Secretary, if you would, please call the roll.
Certainly. Ballard?
Here.
Bama? Curtis?
Here.
Douglas?
Here.
Helmut? McClellan?
Yes.
And Pilak?
Here.
Excellent. So if we would note that we're missing Mo and also Rose. Alright, so next, do we have a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda for October 20th, 2020, for the Village of Oxford Planning Commission.
I would approve that. I would second that.
Excellent. Madam Secretary, if you please call the vote on that.
Curtis?
Yes.
Douglas?
Yes.
Bama? Absent. Ballard?
Yes.
McClellan?
Yes.
Pilak?
Yes.
And Helmut is absent.
Excellent. So we do have an approved agenda for tonight? Do I have a motion to approve the minutes from October the 5th, 2020?
I'll make a motion to approve the regular planning commission of the Village of Oxford, meeting minutes for October 5th, 2020.
This is Pilak. I second the motion.
Excellent. Madam Secretary, if you please call the vote.
Helmut is absent. McClellan?
Yes.
Pilak?
Yes.
Ballard?
Yes.
Bama? Absent. Curtis?
Yes.
Douglas?
Yes.
I think that's everybody.
Yep, that is everybody. Awesome. So that, okay, so we have the approved minutes from October the 5th, 2020. So that brings us to correspondence. Madam Secretary, do we have any correspondence? I don't believe we do.
No, you just had a report that was passed on to you for the RRC, the Redevelopment Ready Communities Baseline Report from the DDA Director. That's not for discussion tonight. It's informational, might have some value when you look at the master plan next year.
Excellent. So we don't have to, we don't have to vote or record that at all. It's just, it's just notification, that's it?
That's right.
Okay, excellent. Thanks a lot. Okay, so that brings us to, that brings us to old business. The discussion of commercial vehicles in residential areas and other. And so let's, Mario, if you'd please kind of start to kind of talk a little bit about some of the changes that you made.
Yeah, I definitely would. So, real briefly, what we've been trying to do, you know, we've had different discussions about different types of amendments of the zoning ordinance. And a recent concern that we talked about last time was about commercial vehicles. And I thought this was an opportunity to start bundling some of these minor amendments together. And then pass, recommend them, or hold a public hearing, gauge the public's opinion on these issues, and then go forward with a recommendation. And by bundling them all together, we can take care of a lot of little issues. So I'd like to work with Terry on this a little bit more to make sure I've caught all the other smaller items, but there are just some small things that we thought were, needed some attention. First one was the idea of tattoo parlors. Right now, they're listed as a regulated use, which only allows them in very restricted areas of the village. And generally speaking, tattoo parlors, and not just tattoo parlors, but also the definition right now is very broad. For example, when it comes to things like a process called microblading or permanent makeup. Technically, that's listed, encompasses by the tattoo ordinance, or tattoo definition. So that's why I thought some of these places might be a little bit I have the ability to locate somewhere else in the village. So originally, we did talk about this, and we did have them throughout the commercial districts. You had some concerns with them being located in downtown, so in front of you tonight is just the idea to remove them from, remove tattoo parlors specifically from adult regulated uses. And then list them as a permitted use in the C2 district. So that's what's on page one of the memo. And so it would allow them in there. I wouldn't allow them in C1 or C2, excuse me, C1 core, C1 transition, but then the idea would be to, that the other types of activities and services I was talking about, like this microblading and permanent makeup. That would just be a normal service that could be listed as an accessory to a hair salon, or you know, the other kind of personal service establishment. So that's why I listed the personal service establishments as, you know, P and the C1 core, C2. That's what's already in there, in the ordinance. So once again, it's a minor thing, and I wasn't sure what, we wanted to just take these one by one. So see if your opinion is on this one.
Can I ask a question? This is Michelle.
Go ahead, Michelle.
I'm wondering, so in the personal service establishment, could massage go in there instead of being called a massage parlor? Be called something else and go into the personal service establishment, so it's not in the adult use or adult regulated uses?
Right. So the way it usually works is there are some actual state statutes when it comes to massage. And the, those individuals that receive licenses, or when it's part of like physical therapy as a therapist, or that sort of person, they have licenses through the state. And so those licensed activities are not, are not part of this regulated use.
Okay, so massage therapy is a licensed profession? And they have to, you have to have, so that would go, right, that would be out of the adult use or no?
Correct. That would not, that would not be in adult use, because technically, there are some other types of massage services that are not within the state statute and don't require a license. And those are the ones that would be required to be in an adult regulated use, an adult regulated situation. So it's the intent of separating those individuals that, offering a, you know, valid service, part of their physical training, or part of licensed massage therapy, like, what do they call it, like Massage Envy, I think, or those type of
Yeah.
Yeah, those are professional, and those are just services. And so that, and then when they, for example, what happens is when they, when they come to the village, if they said, I'm a massage therapist, I want to open a clinic. We ask for their license. If they ask for their license, then they qualify as a personal service. But if they don't have a license, we are required to give, let them have a location, but we tell them, well, you can have a location in the village, but you have to be in this regulated use situation. You have to meet all our standards for regulated use.
Well, okay, I guess I'm just, you know, I'm a massage therapist, so I'm kind of, you know, so there shouldn't be, I guess, in my view, there's not really, like legally, a massage parlor isn't legally even a, like, it's not even allowed. So I guess, like, why would make, you put that in there even at all, like almost it could just not be there?
Right. I mean, that's the thing. No, I'm sorry. You're absolutely right, because technically, they can't call themselves massage therapists if they don't have a license. They're not, they're not really a massage therapist. They're just
And, yeah, and your definition, the definition here of massage, which I'm sure came from a state regulation or something. The definition of massage is really what massage is. So like in this case, it sort of puts it in this adult use category or adult businesses, and it sort of gives it, you know, I don't know, a shit
Yeah, negative connotation, yeah, yeah.
It does, and especially when massage is legal and you're supposed to be licensed and otherwise it's illegal, like lots of other things that are illegal. You know, that we wouldn't put in here because it's illegal.
And that's, that's what I find always kind of weird with this, is like, we're kind of alluding to something that's illegal, that's not even permitted at all.
Right.
And so why even list it? And it falls into this, this area. And so the issue is technically, in the, in the state statute, that licenses and requires all the procedures for a certified real massage therapist, there actually is a section that says it's not necessary to have a license for these type of massages, like Reiki massage and some other ones.
Oh, Reiki, yeah, there's certain things, sure, sure.
So if you'd like
Which is not massage, though. But that's, that's the funny thing, like, that's not massage. Okay, so I'm sorry, I don't mean to get off on a tangent. I just, you know, just saw that before we started, and, you know, I was kind of curious about that, so.
Well, if you, I think there would be one way to easily clarify this, is by stating, for example, under massage parlor, in this situation where it says those individuals, state license, and under the Public Act, I think it's 471 of, whatever, I can get the right act. Do not fall into this category. I could clarify that specifically.
Right, okay.
Because it is a very, it's, even I, I mean, I've been doing this for a while, and it takes a little while to even follow all the different state statutes, so it's kind of we don't want to, it's always hard to write it in such a way so people understand that we're not trying to we're trying to allow the legal uses of, that are licensed, and we're not. We're trying to
Sure.
Yeah.
Right, okay, okay.
Well, I can take, take a look at possibly refining those definitions to make sure that they're, once again, in keeping with all the state statutes and licensing requirements.
Sure. I mean, I would appreciate, you know, clear it up too here.
Yeah, I'm sure, I'm sure the village, you know, the admin will appreciate it, so that way in case when people come in, it's pretty clear. It's much more clear. I don't like it when things are clear as mud, so.
Right, okay, okay, thank you.
Thanks, Michelle. Does anyone else have any questions related to, go ahead, Joe?
Yes, Mario, on page one there, where you have the districts that personal service establishments are listed, you have something under the P1 district as a special use?
Yeah, it's a little, I know it's a little odd, but we do have a lot of our commercial and service uses listed as a special use in the P1. I think it's because for those areas adjacent to downtown, the C1 core and C1 transition, I guess it allows them to be located in those P1 zones.
I thought the P1 was just the parking area.
So did I.
Yeah.
But I, so I think it's kind of odd to say that it's, that we allow any other type of use other than parking. But for some reason, it's kind of, it's in the other parts of the ordinance. If that's another mistake we want to try and fix, we could get rid of like, any other use other than the, other than parking in the P1.
I can see a food truck in a parking lot, but I can't see a massage truck in the parking lot, or a tattoo truck in the parking lot. At least I don't think anybody wants to see that.
Right, exactly.
I was wondering about that, okay.
Well, we can, I can definitely clean that up and try and come back with a more specific, or more clarify that situation in the P1 district.
Jack, did you have some comments?
Yeah, I was gonna ask about P1. I don't think we need a tattoo parlor in P1.
Okay.
Yeah, in a minute, we might get rid of it in that.
Yeah, it's just kind of strange.
Yeah.
Gary, any questions, comments?
No, sir. No, sir.
Okay. Leslie, questions or comments related to the tattoo?
No, 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 thank you.
All set? Okay, so, so I guess maybe the question is, so this is just to help kind of clear up or clean up while we're working already on another ordinance, let's say. This helps clear this up all kind of at the same time. That's why you included it?
Correct, yeah, because as we go through day to day, we find these small inconsistencies. And so rather than go through the effort of having a public hearing and taking it to the council, I mean, you know, we've kind of been holding them on the back burner. So the idea of bundling them all together kind of is a little way to make it more, a little bit more efficient.
Gotcha. And so you're, just a second, Joe. So your suggestion is to completely remove that from the restrictions, and then allow that into C2? Is that what you're stating here?
Yeah, right now, that's the way it's structured. So we can, yeah.
Okay. Joe?
Additionally, I know Mario, it was a while back, months ago, I think I sent you probably eight or 10, 12 different items that were little typos, and some other things in the ordinance. Those kind of things, if they're not material changes, would they have to go through the same process, do you think, as an amendment, or just simple housekeeping?
They could be housekeeping and just minor text revisions, those are allowed. But it's the ones that are, can rise above that, like if, like if the and there are a couple instances too, I, I'm pretty sure Terry wrote them down, but I couldn't find them before tonight, was instances where like, we know like a sentence is missing, or like if a definition isn't actually in keeping with what we've been practicing, you know, those kind of things do need amendments, but the typos, they don't need amendments.
Yeah, okay.
So do, do we have to go through a public hearing to remove this from, from, from the ordinance?
We would, but the good thing is we could have one public hearing to take care of all this, and the couple other ones we're going to talk about tonight.
Gotcha, okay. So do we, do we personally have to vote on this to be able to make, to say, alright, yes, we want to make these changes, or no, we don't want to make these changes?
No, not yet, because what will happen is we'll go through the rest of these, you'll give me any directions on more changes. And then at the public hearing, after the public hearing, when you feel this is, this language is appropriate, then you would make a recommendation to the council for, for all at once.
Sorry, I'm just writing a couple things down.
Okay.
Um, so, go ahead, Gary.
No, I'm fine. We're just, we're waiting for you, buddy. You're doing fine.
Sorry, just, just getting through some of this stuff.
I understand.
Do you have any questions related, or any comments related to the tattoo parlors?
No.
Okay, alright, excellent. So let's move on now to, to any suggestions or changes that you, that you've also made within this, Mario?
Well, one other kind of idiosyncrasy is the fact that we have these adult regulated uses, all those others that are listed, but technically, we don't list them anywhere in the village. Now, if we wanted to, you could keep it that way, but the issue is that technically, these adult, the reason they're listed, and we have to go through this in zoning, is because they are protected under the First Amendment by the Supreme Court. But local municipalities have the ability to place them anywhere in the, in their community. And most of them require special use and put them in in an area that's as far away from, and hopefully is, mitigate any impact on residences. So that's why on page four, I list, consider putting adult regulated uses as a special use in the I1. They have their other setback requirements, they have their other setback requirements from each other. And so the idea would be that if anyone ever wanted to establish something like this, they would have to the only place they could be allowed would be, is they'd have to go find a site in the industrial district. And even then, they'd have to get special use approval. So it's just something to consider. I don't know if we would need to check with the attorney to see if Bob thinks that we even need to consider it, but it's just one of those things that was never listed, and so it would, like I said, it would make the village consistent with Supreme Court rulings.
Gotcha. Okay, which is, go ahead, Leslie.
Yeah, I just want to say if, if Bob hasn't weighed in on that, I think it's a good idea to have his review of that.
We definitely can make that probably, we can make that happen. Okay? Alright, excellent. Because it does regulate it to a very specific area in which then it makes it, I don't want to say difficult, but it challenges, which keeps it out of, out of our downtown, but still complies with legalities of, of people's civil rights, right? Correct?
Right, and, and I've been involved with other situations in which other communities try and scramble to allow them in certain areas, and then based on timing, sometimes they're, if a court rules against the municipality, then the, then the applicant gets to put the, the use wherever they originally intended. So if they wanted to put it in the downtown, they could. And Leslie's right in that we don't have to provide a site for them. We just regulate the district. So we're not responsible for the vagaries of the real estate market. If they can't purchase a piece of property that meets all the setbacks, and meets all the in that particular zone, then that's just, then they're just not capable of being established in the village, so.
Excellent. Okay, perfect. And so next, that would bring us down to, that would bring us down to the commercial vehicles, correct?
Yes. So this is the one that started our conversation last time. Basically, the idea that we would like to have the, especially in this time of COVID, where people are being restricted from, not restricted, but not necessarily having the opportunity to go to their places of business, they're working from home. So the idea to let commercial vehicles park in residential areas. However, we don't want to open up the floodgates in which allowing some of those heavier equipment and pieces of machinery that would block streets and block access from emergency vehicles and that sort of thing. So on page five is an attempt to meet that idea, because I know Jack, especially you guys, had some good, good ideas about those type of vehicles that you would allow. So certain things we've done is like in the definition, moved this idea of where the cab height, anything above eight inches above the, if a body or any other other rear facing attachment is greater than eight inches, then it's automatically this large commercial vehicle. We've eliminated that.
I saw that.
And then I've tried to, I know, it's kind of hard to utilize, find the terminology I was thinking to, they would encompass what we were thinking, because we're basically, I believe what we were thinking is those kind of trucks, vans, panel vans, those kind of vehicles that, that someone would have for their plumbing business, or a Comcast, or that sort of thing. So that's why in the definition, I changed it to say, also passenger vehicles used by contractors. The idea that a standard passenger vehicle would be allowed. And then, in the actual section, 6.1.18, go into specifically saying residential parking, where it says residential parking prohibited, emphasize the fact, one, that it's large commercial vehicles, and then two, that the provision shall not apply to standard passenger vehicles used by contractors, such as light or medium, medium duty trucks, box trucks, or panel vans, when parked on private property where the contractor resides. And then, since this is kind of a vague, since it's kind, it's kind of hard to specify, I couldn't find any specific quantifiable dimension, like whether it's a weight or a length of a vehicle. I don't know if we want to get into that specific. So that's why I just thought the idea of using pictures or graphics to show trucks, vehicles that are an example of what can be permitted, and the vehicles of what are just too large, such as, you know, contractors, I mean, heavy equipment, you know, dump trucks, cranes, that sort of thing.
Mario, what are you, Mario, what are you trying to do here?
Basically, it's trying to allow for those kind of trucks to park in the residential areas, because currently, the way that ordinance is interpreted, people, the they've been stating that they, they can't park these vehicles in residential. Is that right, Joe? Is that how it's been going?
Yes, in some instances. A lot of them, if it weren't for the ladder rack on top of them, wouldn't be in hitting the definition of the commercial vehicles. And if they have a seven inch ladder rack, they're fine. If they have a nine inch ladder rack on top of, nine inches above the cab, then they're in trouble. So that's where we're kind of, would like to clear it up a little bit, because the van could be, there's the same exact van, but it's possible that the ladder rack now extends nine inches above the roof, and therefore, it hits the definition of commercial vehicle and is prohibited. And many of these are passenger type regular vans that have been used by these contractors. So we were trying to clarify a little bit. Part also that I think took some people, they weren't sure how to interpret it, was the, a body and length of nine feet. Some of us understand when you, what that means, you have a pickup truck, and then behind that, you have a bed, or a flatbed, or a stake rack. That's the part that they're referring to, the nine feet. Some people were calling and saying, well, geez, my neighbor's car is nine, 10 feet long. So there was some confusion of what that measurement meant. I think we can clarify that with people, but if we can't do it specifically here, but I, I think the box vans, box trucks is something that's allowed, and is kind of edging into the commercial thing. You could have somebody with a 24 foot rider thing, and say, well, that's a box van. But, you know, they're an expediter or something, you know. It all depends on where that line is that everyone's comfort stops and, and starts, I guess. What's acceptable park next to you, Gary, or what's the next acceptable park? Next to somebody else out there that the person uses that, their day to day vehicle for work?
So let me, there's, there's one specific thing where I'm kind of reading here, and it's, it's in, it's in the definitions. And where it says, "Commercial vehicles shall not include motorhomes, passenger vehicles used by contractors, or recreation vehicles." But it says, "But shall include construction equipment such as backhoes, power shovels." Can you explain that a little bit to me, Mario? Should it say, "But shall not include construction equipment"?
Uh, no, it is, it should say "shall include," because we're trying to say, what are these larger commercial vehicles? Because then the larger commercial vehicles are the ones that can't park in residential areas.
So it was just the way, I was just reading it incorrectly, so, okay. Alright. The only other comment maybe that I had related to this is when I think of a box truck, I typically think of a 16 foot truck, which is what you'd rent from Ryder, and anything larger than that. You know, being in the, you know, doing a lot of shipping and things like that, I see, we consider box trucks, 16 footers, or 26 footers. And so, box trucks to me, that's, that would be one terminology that would basically fit into that large commercial vehicle exceptions, or examples, that I personally would think that we should take out of that.
In terms of restrict?
In terms to restrict, correct?
Yeah, good, good, thank you.
That would qualify as a commercial vehicle, and they're prohibited.
Yeah, that would be prohibited, so, yep.
Should we go with any kind of specific dimension? Joe, you mentioned that nine foot was kind of an issue. Should we say anything?
I think the, the goal of that was right, because normally, eight foot is the longest bed you can get in a pickup. That could be a contractor's pickup. If you're gonna go past that, it's more than likely gonna be a stake rack, which we have shown, or a flatbed, which you have shown, or a tow truck that has big roll off type, and that. Those were definitely over. I think that was, we just had to make people understand what that measurement was pertaining to, not the overall vehicle length.
Right.
Some of those stake trucks, uh, some of those stake trucks are basically the same trucks that use a, those 16 foot box truck bodies. So, it's the same platform, and they just put a box on it, and so that would be considered a 16 foot box truck.
Right, so what's behind the cab?
Yep.
Correct, yep. And I don't think anybody wants a six, but I mean, you're getting in that really fine line, but of there's gonna be a very few contractors that would have a 16 foot box truck. It's really fine, kind of, maybe one or two. There might have to be some sort of an exception for that very specific vehicle.
I think the ones we were concerned about, that we're hearing the most feedback from, are the typical van, service, heating and cooling, charter. Those are the ones that were in danger of being prohibited because of, the only reason I could see that they would be prohibited is because their ladder rack extended perhaps more than nine inches or eight inches above the roof of the vehicle.
Remembering from some of the other meetings too, Joe, people were upset that the vans had the name of a company on the side of it.
Right.
And, yeah.
And that alone does not hit the definition, right? Because you could have a nice, beautiful Buick out there, with Oxford Bank on it, too.
That's exactly right.
And it does not meet the definition. So the ones we were mostly concerned about, to make sure we didn't harm, I guess, were those lower level simple pickup with the ladder rack, simple van with a ladder rack, that are like predominant, like you said, Justin. The other ones are the minority that would be out there, but their decision would need to be made. Do you want to carve out something for that niche of vehicle also? And, you know, I've seen some contracts nowadays pivoting to Ram, Dodge makes one, it's kind of like the FedEx truck. It's kind of like a little bit taller panel van.
Right.
Again, so now Again, so now, a little more gray area.
Right. Sprinter. Yeah.
Yeah. Yes, correct. Yep.
Yep, the new uh, the new prime delivery vehicles.
Yeah.
Yep, right.
So Joe, are you getting complaints from residents about uh commercial vehicles being parked in residential areas?
We had one or two persons uh back in the spring that were bringing this up. And that was about the time that the council decided to put the moratorium of the enforcement in place due to the higher probability of people working from home that maybe didn't in the past, but some always have been.
Mm-hmm.
It was recognized then that, you know, this is more of a norm today than maybe in the past.
Right.
Everyone worked off-site or at the shop.
Right.
They wanted to kind of at least put the brakes on that more enforcement for a while. Um, and some people, one or two that spoke to us that were concerned about all these vehicles around, some of them that they were talking about were definitely hitting the definition of larger that wouldn't be allowed. Um, but most of them, I believe, were the typical service vans that we're all used to seeing and probably don't have much of an issue with.
Sure. Mario, have you been able to find um examples of other restrictions in communities that have tried to restrict uh commercial vehicle parking in residential areas?
They usually um are are basically what we have on the books right now.
Yeah.
They they haven't considered about making this kind of uh concession.
Mm-hmm.
I think, excuse me, I think um, I think uh you guys had had a, have a, are trying to answer a good question because these are type of working um vehicles that aren't necessarily detrimental to being in a residential area because they're ju- about the size and shape as a normal truck. I mean, nowadays with the size of an F-150 or everything like that, those are, those are pretty big, too. So I think uh, because even in the purpose here, the purpose of our existing ordinance, you know, preserve the health and safety of your general welfare. And it's about, all about the ingress and egress of emerging vehicles. I think that's really the issue. And so a lot of times more communities just said, uh, none. And they even, and they even um went so far as to include people with uh commercial messages on them. And that's kind of excessive, I think, too, because even like someone like um uh, you know, just a contractor uh that that doesn't have an outdoor storage yard, that just wants to be able to to go to work the next day.
Sure.
You know, should be able to park for let, you know, overnight on their driveway.
Right.
So you guys are answering a good question now. So that's why it's kind of hard right now to find another good example.
Hmm.
The more time for this enforcement of this, I think, is through December first. I don't know what council's pleasure might be when that comes time to uh put the enforcement back in place. Or if this is winding its way through here and this isn't quite ready, maybe they'll extend it out a little further while the planning commission considers more about this.
Um, Jack, how how do you feel about uh what Mario's come up with?
He uh, we've included just about everything we talked about. You know, these are all the service vans and trucks that normally would be found as, number one, sometimes it's a perk for the person to drive it. Number two, rather than having to go up to Flint to pick their vehicle up to service a hospital in Pontiac that's home, um, this has clarified the height better. Um, it like Joe mentioned, I think it's real good.
Excellent.
Okay.
Uh, Le- Leslie, do you have any, uh, how do you feel about, do you have any uh changes, concerns, questions?
No, I uh actually wanted to say I appreciate the images because they help clarify for layman, I think, uh, the general trend of the differences here and what's being prohibited and what is being allowed is uh the examples help with that a lot. So I want to thank Mario for putting those together.
I think if I remember right, that was your suggestion.
I think it was Mario.
I believe it might have been Maureen's.
Oh, okay. All right. You should have went with it. She's not on, she's not on the call. You could have taken credit.
You could have taken credit for that.
I think I did agree with it and comment on it, but I.
Um, uh, Michelle, do you have any, how do you, do you have any questions, comments, or how do you feel about uh um what Mario came, has come up with here on this?
I like it. Yeah, I think it's good, good plan.
Okay.
No more questions. Yep.
Gary, your comments?
I'm good with it, sir.
All right. Uh, I'm good with it as well. The only thing that I would suggest that I would like to see removed is the, is that terminology, box trucks in section B.
Yeah. Why are you taking that out?
Uh, to me, box trucks are considered to, with the way, my terminology is, it would be under the large commercial vehicle sign.
Well, I think he's addressed that up front with the nine feet length and back of cab.
Okay.
You know, you can call it a box truck. It could be eight and a half foot, but it's a box truck, you know, no man's platters added to. You know, I've been in the truck business for forty years and if somebody says a box truck, I agree with you, Justin. I I I look for a a Hertz or a U-Haul.
Right.
Um, we can't forget about the nine-foot uh delivery vehicles that are nine feet behind the cab. So with that in there up in item D, wait, up in uh definition, I think it clears it up.
I I'm specifically talking about section B and it says, "The provision shall not apply to standard vehicles used by contractors such as light or medium-duty trucks." So it's, we're saying you, this this doesn't apply to it. Um, and it doesn't apply to box trucks. And if we were to, I personally, once again, it's one of those things, I personally feel, large commercial vehicles, a box truck is a larger commercial vehicle. And if, I mean, if you guys don't agree with me, I'm I'm, that's fine. Go ahead, Joe.
How about a box truck over nine feet?
There you go.
Sure, perfect. I'm happy with.
I like that.
All right. Let's, thank you.
Okay.
Okay. Other than that, I'm I'm good.
Good.
Because I see what you're saying. It kind of left it open.
Yes, I felt it still left, let, you know, you're only gonna have a few people that may have a box truck, but just cleans it up a little bit. Okay, excellent. Thanks, Mario. Appreciate it. Um, so that I I consider that being uh, with that, I I've considered that uh the new business or the old business closed for today. Um, so I guess last thing is, what's the next steps that we have to do related to this?
Well, I'll make these uh minor revisions and I, like I said, I would like to take a look at that list that Joe had of those nine or 10 things, just to make sure that we don't need to um include anything else. And then uh um get that uh, get a version, a final version in front of you and then we could schedule a public hearing. Or if you'd like, we can, you can direct us to schedule a public hearing uh in November without seeing the changes.
First reading then, too, even.
Well, since it's the, since the plan, planning commission just asked to have the public hearing, they don't even have to do a reading.
Oh, that's true.
Yeah, so we could, you could direct us to schedule a public hearing um for the second meeting in November because that would be enough time to notify for it. Uh, but then you'd still have one more opportunity to look at it in November.
Um, so the first time we could look at it again is most likely going to be November the twentieth. As long as there's something on the agenda for November the twentieth.
Great. Or just this.
Uh, do we, I mean, okay. I mean, we're gonna have a public, you know, a a public meeting just or a um a planning commission meeting just for this alone? Or we could do it for the twentieth? So just to see it one last time and then send it off to the public hearing?
The twentieth of November is a Friday.
Yeah, it's actually the seventeenth.
Seventeenth, excuse me.
Um, you need fifteen, you have to have, you need fifteen days or more notification or publication in the newspaper. And when you, when I do send it to the newspaper, I have to have a full and complete copy of the changes, the language that you're amending um for public view. So if I don't have that document at the time of publication, I won't publish.
And and I could get a revised version to to Terry for for the public to look at. It's just that you guys wouldn't have seen the final version in front of you. Um, that's not, hasn't, other communities do do allow that simply because it's not substantive, large changes? Uh, but it's up to you. I mean, you can always wait until the December meeting.
I think I'd rather take a look at it. I'd take it, rather take a look at it during our next uh, during our next, you know, meeting or next regular meeting and then go from there. Okay?
I, I just have a good plan. It makes me more comfortable as the person doing the publishing, so.
Okay. All right, perfect. We'll do that then. So we'll we'll see the the next draft or the final draft that you that you have for us, Mario, during our next scheduled meeting. And then from that, after our, let's say, approval of that, then we'll we'll, we'll then uh schedule the public hearing. All right. Uh, brings us on now to new business. Let's see here. Bear with me, guys. Uh, so new business is the uh, the expansion of the existing outdoor dining of off-season at Homegrown Brewing. Um, and so um, let's see, Mario, if you would please, uh, just go with a little explanation about what you what you've come with and what you put together?
Yep. Um, so, so as as uh just mentioned, Homegrown Brewing uh is would like to have the ability to have uh outdoor seating throughout the year. Uh, the way that our ordinance is set up is that when it's um from a uh April until November uh outdoor seating area, they would only need to uh come for uh, to apply for the approval um through um excuse me, through uh, because they're in the C1 core, it's something that's permitted. However, because they would like to have the ability to go have uh outdoor seating from November to April, so in the, in those winter months. Obviously, the reason being, well, excuse me, I don't know if obviously, but I won't speak for them, but I would think it's because to maximize their opportunities for seating, especially in this COVID time, because if their indoor area is restricted, maximizing they, this use of their existing space is what's preferred. Um, so they've come with to us with an uh application. In the outdoor app, uh, outdoor seating areas, we do have a a large, a list of the different items to consider. Um, and some of those items uh in- include uh making sure the, with regards to the enclosure of the site. Yeah, have railing around it. Yeah, absolutely.
Please, they have an existing uh site, of course, that's enclosed and has a signage and things like that on it, so um, I wasn't sure how familiar you were with their existing outdoor area.
Oh, yeah. No, I was gonna, yeah, thank you, Joe. I appreciate that. Because I was gonna mention that because they have outdoor seating already for the win, the summer months, it's the winter months that they, and they have majority of everything that we normally would require already. Then that, and that first thing being the outdoor enclosure, meaning they have it fenced off. Because this is already on their private property, we're not talking about it being in the front, in the front on the sidewalk. This is on their own private property. Uh, they already have, and they already have it fenced off that meets that requirement. Um, what they're proposing is to use these, sometimes they're called igloos, but there's, it's like a geodesic dome situation uh structure, which is uh, it's a frame, and correct me wrong, it's a frame with either a plastic or plexiglass uh triangular shapes that create an enclosed area for customers. Um, so they would be placing two of these on their existing deck. Um, and the applicants have indicated they're gonna remove them once the warmer weather returns. Uh, so there's not gonna be any kind of existing permanent change to what their, what their current situation is. So there's no additional roof or overhead structure being created. We have in a standard for looking at the outdoor furniture compatibility. Technically, the applicant hasn't indicated uh what kind of furniture they'd be using. So that'd just be an informational question for them in terms of what kind of furniture. Um, usually we have that consideration because if it's in the, in the um, once again, on a public sidewalk, we'd like just confirm that it meets with the character and style of the downtown. Uh, this is once again into the rear of the building and on their private property.
Right.
Um, technically, we want to make sure that the off-season equipment of this uh is stored somewhere else. We'd just like to ask them where it would be stored. In terms of.
Well, all that matters, Mario, is that it be stored off-site. It not be stored in their facility or where it's visible out on their back portion of property.
Right, off to the side or something.
Right. I don't really care where it's stored. I just don't want it stored onsite.
Correct. Um, in terms of hours of operation, uh, their hours are gonna remain the same, which is in compliance with the ordinance standards. And we don't have to worry about a clear vision triangle because they're not located along any adjacent driveways. Um, the parking requirements, um, because there are gonna be an additional seats as a result of this uh outdoor seating, uh, there's no additional need for parking. Um, one, one additional question might have, we will have for the applicant is uh, I but I don't know if they already have the no food or beverage allowed beyond this point type of signage. That's something we usually require once again, it's more public. So there's that. And then with regards to um any kind of noise or lighting, just curious as if there's gonna be an additional speakers or lighting or TVs basically outside. However, that's usually more of a concern when they're directly adjacent or pretty close to residences and their, their location is across from a parking lot, so it's not really that pertinent to the situation. And then finally, it's one thing specific to uh this, this winter seasonal issue is the um um, heating of the outdoor area. Uh, the application indicated that uh be heated with an approved portable space heater. Uh, so the one thing is we do recommend any approval will be contingent upon both the fire chief and the building official uh approving the proposed heaters and the power source for those, or the fuel source for those, how, depending on how they they work. Um, I do believe there are definitely some uh approved standards for being an enclosed area with this heating sources because they're, they're kind of popular. So there's, there's a method.
Exactly.
So there is some method of heating people or else.
Right.
They just won't get wet from the snow, but they're still cold. So there has to be some way to eat them. So. And finally, last question for them will be if they have a little area where they can move the snow to clear a path. Just making sure that, you know.
There's enough room.
There's enough room and they were not putting the snow and blocking off the sidewalk. Once again, that's more of a when the, when the situation is on a public sidewalk, but as I just mentioned, they're on their property. So beyond those questions, uh, Jack?
Yeah, I I just want to say that, um, you know, first off, John and Marie have done a wonderful job of improving that site.
Amen.
Beautiful uh restaurant brewery in downtown Oxford. People talk about the patio, the ambiance from the sign out front, that's not on the roof. Remember that one?
Yep.
We can go on and on, but it, it, all in all, they follow all the rules. Uh, I don't believe there's ever been a complaint. Has there, Joe? Uh, we've never had the Liquor Control Commission in there. I know people talk so much about homegrown brewing. They've won accolades and awards from around all the beer brewing community.
Yep.
And um, you know, I'm gonna start this off by stating, I'll make a motion to approve the off-season outdoor dining application for Homegrown Brewing Company, twenty-eight North Washington, with the fire chief and building official approval for the heating source, outdoor heating source.
Mr. President, I'd like, I'd like to second that if you don't mind.
Sure.
I know Leslie has a comment, but I will.
Go ahead, Leslie. Do you have a? You have to unplug yourself.
Hi, Homegrown.
Oh.
Look at this. This is awesome.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Leslie.
Yeah, thank you. I I um do have some um points I wanted to clarify if I could, please. So the seating that's um described with the application and with Mario's introduction is bench seating. Is that right?
Inside the igloos? No, it would probably be regular, regular chairs.
Regular chairs, okay. And um, I also am curious, these are sixteen feet in diameter, right? Each of these igloos?
Well, one of them, one of them is sixteen, the other one's fourteen.
Okay. And uh, you are anticipating up to ten per people seated in each one at at one time, is that right?
In in the larger one. The smaller one will probably be camped at either six or eight, depending on the table we put in there.
You know, I'm not sure. I saw that on the application, so maybe it would be helpful to clarify that. Um, and I also am, uh, I was trying to understand in my own mind how the seating would work and what the square footage of this would be and how that would work during the the COVID pandemic, which I know is only part of the reason that you're asking for this. Um, uh, especially. pandemic, which I know is only part of the reason that you're asking for this, special extension, let's call it, seasonal extension.
Well, we intend on continuing to follow the COVID guidelines. And for a restaurant that's been no more than 10 people in a seated party, like dining together at a table. So that's how we came up with the number of 10 as a maximum capacity.
Okay. Well, and so when I was trying to understand this, what I calculated out for the 16-foot in diameter igloo was something like 201 square feet.
Yeah.
Okay, so if people are seated six feet apart, you wouldn't be able to fit 10 people in there under the COVID requirement?
Six feet between parties. Six feet between parties. These have only one party at a time. So it would be normal dining seating where you're next to.
Okay.
But you come in as a group, it's a group reservation, so.
Okay. So you do have some ideas about what kind of furnishings and seating you plan to provide, but you could clarify that. Am I right?
Yeah, we're working on that right now. We're actually working with Caveman and Pip to help us decorate. So we're working on that right now.
And I have another question for you, Joe. Do you anticipate that other establishments are going to be interested in this same kind of arrangement and would be coming before the planning commission again, perhaps?
I don't think so. I think the location that John and Marie have is unique. It's large. It's one of the best outdoor seating areas that hits all the marks we have in the village. The other ones are smaller. They're kind of right in the walkways. I don't think they're really set up for this type of thing as well as they are.
So you don't anticipate a need for developing some kind of standards or guidelines, you know, because it's possible that this type of seating during the off-season could occur for a lot of years yet, or that there might be interest in continuing it. And so I just wanted to bring that up because I know we don't really have anything specifically that addresses outdoor standards, you know, according to specific guidelines outside of what Mario addressed in his application, or in his presentation.
Right. And most of the other areas are either in public areas or very little private area, whereas theirs is a large private area. So that's kind of, again, one unique possibility that they have, or, you know, to help them use this option.
Okay, let me see if I have any other questions. I think that answers everything that I was curious about. So at this point, I'd like to close my questions and remarks. Thank you.
Thanks, Leslie.
Marie, I'd like to say thank you very much for bringing this before the commission. Personally, my wife has said she's visited restaurants that had these types of igloos onsite. They're awesome. And they're really very, very cool. So thank you very much for bringing something so state-of-the-art to Oxford. And I know you'll have my support on this request. So thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you so much.
Thanks, guys. So it sounds like we have, we have a motion, we have a motion on the table. We have a second on that. So if we could, please.
I don't think, I don't think I heard a second on that. I only heard the motion.
I seconded Terry. It's Gary Douglas. I seconded it. You bet.
So Madam Secretary, if you.
Pardon? I have, did you want me to read back what I have for the motion? Is that what you said?
No, do you want me to read it again?
Sure.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve. I know Marie wants to hear this. Outdoor dining application for Homegrown Brewing Company 28 North Washington with the fire chief and building official approval for the heating source.
Excuse me, Jack?
Yeah.
Just, just to point out, technically, this is a special use approval.
Okay.
You might want to throw that in there. Grant, motion to recommend grant special use approval for them.
The, it's an off-season additional vending, so I chose that. Do you want me to change that to I'll make a motion to approve the special use?
Yeah, you just put that in there. I'd appreciate it.
I would add special in between the and off-season. How's that?
Yeah, special use.
I'll make the motion to approve the special off-season outdoor dining application. How's that?
Do we, do we need to specify that it will expire in spring of 2021?
The ordinance already speaks to that. The special use for outdoor off-season is from, I believe, November 2nd to April 14th.
Okay.
The special use timeframe that's already in the ordinance.
That's why I called it the special off-season.
Yep.
Yeah, it's specifically on the application. Okay.
Mr. President, I continue my second of that motion.
Okay. Madam Secretary, if you please call for the vote.
McClellan?
Yes.
Pylek?
Yes.
Curtis?
Yes.
Ballard?
Yes.
Douglas?
Yes.
And Bema is absent, Helmut absent.
Okay, excellent. Congratulations, guys. You guys have your, keep up the good work. Thank you.
Yep. Welcome. Nice to have you.
Adios.
Bye. I'm glad you made it with the Zoom link.
Thank you. Love these.
Thanks, guys. Now, that takes us now to public comment. Is there any, any public comment?
Item B.
Did I miss something?
Seven B.
Meeting cancellation, November 3rd.
I'm sorry. Yes, that's right.
We're canceling a meeting for the general election.
Yep. So meeting cancellation for November 3rd, 2020, the election day. Do we have to take a vote on that? No, so that's just basically more of a statement than, than anything, correct?
I believe it's already on our schedule as a canceled meeting. I'd have to double check that.
Right, I'm sure it is.
It's just that small technicality I'm just not familiar with. Just wanted to clarify.
I'm not positive. I just thought of that. It's probably already on our meeting's schedule as a cancellation when they're going to really approve it. So it's more of a notice to you guys, I think.
Excellent. Okay, thank you. Then it takes us down to item number eight, public comment. Do we have any public comment out there?
There's a few folks on, but they've muted themselves. So it's up to them.
Hi, this is Lori Borjo.
Hi, Lori.
Hi. I just wanted to, hopefully I can stand on my time. Stop me if I don't. But I just wanted to explain my family's struggles with the commercial vehicle ordinance that we've had. Maybe to kind of give you some clarification on where I think we could use a little clearing up. So starting in 2018, we received a ordinance warning saying that my husband's service van, which had a ladder rack on it, was in, not in compliance. And that was due to a neighbor who was complaining because they were selling their home. They felt that a service van like that in our driveway would affect their sale. When we spoke with village reps at the time, they told us that because we had a commercial plate and our vehicle is over nine feet long, that we were out of compliance and would not entertain, you know, our feeling that there were holes in their, in their interpretation of the ordinance. It's, we spent thousands of dollars extending our garage door. And during that time, we had to keep our vehicle parked at, at mom's house, which was literally 10 houses down the road, because then it couldn't be seen by, you know, people purchasing the home. It took about three weeks to complete the construction and it also took three weeks to sell the home. So recently, there's been some more complaints from a person in the neighborhood who doesn't live within sight of our home, but is complaining about multiple vehicles throughout the sub and, and that for, I don't know what reasons, just beauty. So our new service van is a brand, brand new van. It has these slightly larger bumpers on it, so it won't fit in that garage even with the height extended. And that's, that's not an easy fix. That's more than thousands. We'd be having to go through a lot of permits and huge construction for that. So I just feel like the, the ordinance is just a little too vague. Personally, I don't feel like the portion of the ordinance that says that the body can't exceed nine inches from the cab would include a ladder rack, being that that's an aftermarket addition to it. It's not the actual body of the vehicle. But again, that's just another part of the ordinance that's just up to interpretation. And I feel could use some clarifications. I think the, the pictures that you have in there are great and it really helps explain it. But it, there's just a few things in the wording, even with the way you're suggesting changing it, that, you know, if somebody decides that that nine feet again, like two years ago, it was decided that nine feet included all vehicles. I mean, there's not a single vehicle less than nine feet, really. I understand that it means the, just the body, but that is so hard for people to understand that, again, we were considered out of compliance due to that in the past. I don't feel like a ladder rack also meets the definition of the construction equipment additions that were included there. It says items, heavy equipment such as backhoes. So I almost feel like if there were just an exception, just kind of saying that light aftermarket equipment such as ladder racks is not included in commercial vehicles would be helpful. I do also want to note that I agree with Justin's idea that I don't really think the words box truck should be added to the ordinance as within compliance. I feel like, to me, I agree with Justin. A box truck to me is a vehicle with a huge, you know, difference between that body and cab. And it's just not something that, if my husband got one, I'd tell him, take it back. It's, I just, I don't think the neighbors want to see that. So.
No.
Thank you for your time. I really appreciate you looking over the ordinance. And, you know, my husband last week is, or last couple of weeks ago had said something and, and what he meant was, we've been going through this actually, kind of longer than I think most people in the village. And we're just really, really appreciative of the moratorium and of you looking this over and taking into consideration changes that, that I feel is definitely needed for people like him who are going out to the hospitals, nursing care. It's really important that you, the moratorium has just taken so much weight off of our shoulders and, and you doing this just extends that. Thank you.
Thank you, Lori. Thanks for your comments. And we'll, we'll take all that into, into consideration as well.
Thank you.
Hi, everybody. Hi, everybody. It's Kelly Arcles here. How are you? 401 Thornhill Trail. I want to say that I support Lori in her, in how she scrutinized the latest version of the ordinance. My only comment is, and I'm not seeing it in there, so maybe I'm just kind of confused by this, is that I strongly believe that we should have a very cohesive ordinance for commercial vehicles as the township. And nowhere in the township that I'm seeing, maybe I'm incorrect, does it talk about ladder racks and heights. I do agree with her too, that I love the imagery in terms of like really clarifying what commercial vehicles are allowed and what are not allowed. So I want to thank you guys very much for your work and your efforts on that. Mario, thank you, in particular, because I know that that was something that you worked very hard on. And then the last thing that I want to say is, I want to thank you guys for what you guys did for Homegrown. I think it's amazing. And I think they're an amazing establishment. And I think it's awesome that they have that, that additional permit. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Kelly.
Thanks, Kelly. Anyone else? All right, excellent. So now it takes us now to item number 10, consultant or admin comments. Do we have any comments between us? All right, no comments. Commissioner comments. Jack, what do we, anything, any news on the township?
The, I'll name two developments. One is the Enclaves. That's a condominium development that's going in by the Abbey Ridge Apartments behind Tim Horton's. And the Manners of Westlake, that's the final build out of Waterstone on Dunlap and Baypoint Drive. So those two are at the planning commission. They should be breaking ground. Culvers is waiting for their MDOT road permit to work in the road right away for the tapping of the sewer and the water. Other than that, this, if you don't have a meeting on November 17th, this will be my last meeting of the planning commission. Because on November 20th, I assume the position of supervisor in Oxford. So.
What does that mean?
That means you don't get to see my sordid face on your Zoom meeting anymore.
Come on, what does that mean?
It means I'm going to be the township supervisor.
Do you, does that mean you have to leave the Oxford Planning Commission?
I'm off the Oxford Planning Commission now. I relinquished that seat so that John, John Nold would take it over because he is an elected trustee for the next four years. And he was on the planning commission also. So he will now be the trustee that represents at the planning commission. I had to get off of that. Now I have to get off of the village planning commission meeting because I'm on the, the township supervisor, so.
Jack, I'm so glad to know you, buddy.
Congratulations.
You have been such a good friend. You have been such a good friend to us, Jack. And I just, I can't even stop singing your praises, buddy.
Well, thank you. You know, I tried.
You're a good friend. You're a good friend. And you have just done amazing things for us. You have been everybody's mentor on this group.
Well, don't make my head too big. I got to get out of my wife's closet here in a minute.
I know, I know.
You know, it's funny, when I started on this, I'm still adamant today, there's only one zip code. While there's two names and two governments.
Right.
One zip code.
Right.
We do good in the village. It only enhances the township. What we do good in the township enhances the village.
Amen.
I love working with Joe Mador, who is also sits on a supervisory position.
Yep.
Many of you, Mario, the planner, I work with different planners from anywhere from Giffords to, I mean, just, it's a plethora of people that you learn from.
Yep.
Staying active in the community, understanding business people, trying to remove roadblocks for them, understanding that, you know, this is not a job for me to make money. This is a job to provide the proper distribution of monies that people pay in taxes.
Yep.
Generating more property or income tax to the community versus having residents pay it. It's, it's a benefit. And I just, I love Oxford. My four kids graduated from school here. I've been here for a few days.
Yeah.
I have hair.
Yeah.
It's, it's been a lot of fun. It's still a lot of fun. I've ran a lot of millages, the sheriff's millage, the fire millages. I work with a lot of the different people. I see even Sue Bizzardi's on there. Sue and I could even argue or tussle over something. The bottom line of this is, we all live in Oxford and Oxford needs to succeed. I'm on the phone with Joe every Wednesday on the MDOT calls, remediating left turn lane times to, videos in the new pavement. I mean, it's just somebody, I wish there were more people in the community that would step up and say, you know, I'd like to give a little back.
Yeah.
I see Kelly Arcles on there every once. Yep, there she is. Now she's off mute. But, you know, people, people need to come to the, to government, like it is on the planning commission. It's been a blessing to have Leslie join, Gary join.
Amen, amen.
These new people that have joined, Michelle, thank you. And, you know, it's a thankless job because you can do one good thing for somebody else and one bad thing for somebody else. But it's the good things that count. And the bad things will go away after they realize that the medicine was good, it tasted bad. But you know what? It's, it's all good for Oxford.
Jack, you represent the best to what local, local government has to offer.
Thank you.
I'm so glad to call you my friend, buddy. And it's been a pleasure serving with you. I thank you and God bless you, buddy.
Thank you. I try to do it with integrity and, you know what? You can dig in my closet. I don't care.
Can I?
Bless your heart.
Can I say one thing? This is Kelly Arcles.
Yeah, Kelly, go ahead.
Thank you. Jack Curtis, thank you so much for everything that you've done, the time you've served in the planning commission for Village of Oxford, everything that you're doing for the township. Thank you so much. And that I would like to ask that if there's an opening on the planning commission, I would love to put my name in.
Yeah, Kelly, I was just gonna say, we have an opening, buddy. It sounds to me like you're up next.
I would, I would be, I, weirdly enough, I find the zoning, the zoning ordinance stuff intriguing and I would love to be involved.
Talk to my buddy Justin there. He'll be happy to help you out.
I will reach out to Justin. Thank you.
Justin, if I can just interject something for Kelly. Kelly, what you might want to do is put together a brief resume. Don't tell me what your work, tell me some of the experiences, but, but pontificate. What your work, tell me some of the experiences, but but pontificate a little bit about how you'd like to help the community, what you'd like to understand, how do you like to work with it? And and I call it a short resume. Get one to Joe Mador and Joe will have it on hand for when an opening does pop up in the planning commission. You can send one to my attention at the township hall and you are a resident of the village, but the village is still in the township.
Now, Jack, don't you be taking her. Don't you be taking her. I hear where you're going with that. Don't you be taking her.
Don't believe me. I can coach a good baseball, football, basketball team and I know how to get good players.
I see what he's doing.
I see that too. I heard that right away, Justin. Didn't you hear that?
Yeah.
He's gonna he's gonna he's gonna scoop her up.
Play the game. The coach picks good players.
Thank you, Jack. And no, and thank you for that advice. I will definitely heed that and I will send out my information to you guys. Thank you so much.
Good. Welcome, Kelly.
Thank you.
And that's about it.
Thanks, Jack. We're definitely going to miss you, buddy. So thank you.
Okay, thank you. You're welcome. Joe, that guy looks like he's a pretty friendly guy.
He sure is. Drives you nuts sometimes.
All right, guys. So let's as we kind of continue to kind of move along now, it's. Rose isn't with us on the thing for the ZBA, but so we'll take it to the the DDA is is Chief Pete on the line at all to. Come update on the DDA. All right, so we'll move along then. So it takes us now to adjournment. Guys.
Jack, make a motion, buddy.
Yeah.
Excuse me. Can I make one more comment?
Sure, go ahead, Leslie.
Comment I was waiting. I wanted to just say, Jack, you're terrific and I will get you, but we'll see you around. But I no idea who is going to formulate the motions when you're gone.
No kidding.
I was thinking the exact same thing.
It's gonna fall to you, Leslie.
I have great faith in you.
Yeah, me too.
But anyway, Jack, so see you around.
Thank you very much.
All right.
Thanks, guys.
So, Jack, one last motion, buddy.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I second.
Excellent. So Madam Secretary, if you please call the vote.
McClellan.
Yes.
Pylik. Curtis.
Yes.
Douglas.
Hi.
Ballard.
Yes. That's it. So we are adjourned, guys.
All right.